Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Town of Color Bay's Town Council Meeting of March 17th, 2021. If you could, Madam Clerk, if you could please take the role.
Thank you. Councilmember Duncan.
Here.
Councilmember Coria.
Here.
Councilmember Lord.
Here.
Vice Mayor Callahan.
Here.
Mayor Mierbot.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. If you could all please rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Okay, welcome to our Town Council Meeting of March 17th. It was a little hybrid meeting here. Debbie, if you could go ahead and read the instructions, I'm going to be opening up the meeting for public comments at this time.
Thank you. When joining the meeting, you will automatically be muted. Welcome to tonight's meeting. The public was able to make public comments prior to the meeting either by leaving a voicemail message or sending an email to the town clerk. There were no public comments received by the town clerk, either in voicemail or email. If you wish to speak tonight, please press star nine and the host will be alerted. Pressing star nine is known as raising your hand. Once you press star nine, you'll be placed in the queue to speak and will be called upon by your name or the last three digits of your phone number. Please wait to be called upon. Please state your name and address. If you are a hired consultant or a town employee, or if you're engaged in lobbying activities or representing an organization, please provide that information before speaking. Please be sure to be in a quiet area to avoid unnecessary noise and a time limit of three minutes will be imposed for each speaker during public comments. Your cooperation is appreciated. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, facilitator. Is there anybody in the queue to speak for public comments?
And there is no one in the queue to speak at this time.
Okay, I will close public comments. And that brings us now to our Town Council Announcements Board and Committee Reports. I'm hopeful you all have had an opportunity to read it. Do you have anything to add to your committee reports? No?
No.
Okay, Councilman Callahan, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if this is the right place in the agenda to ask this question, but we don't have any place in the agenda for like new businesses or things like that. So it's a, it's a question that I'd like to pose regarding the the building official through the chair to the town manager. Is this an appropriate time or would you like that later on in the agenda?
Let's go ahead and do that after we, we take care of the rest of our business. If you can remind me at the end before we close, I'll give you the opportunity to go through the town.
Okay.
Yep, better yet, the town manager gives his report. You can address him at that time, okay?
Great, thank you.
Okay. I have just a couple of things. As you all know, the tomorrow is, the TPO will be addressing the the connectivity issue on 87th Avenue and the Bridge. And we did put together a committee from Color Bay at the request of our Commissioner Danielle Cohen Higgins. And I just wanted to thank the committee members. I'd like to thank Leah Hopner, Paul Blake, Sandro Lebos, and Michelle Craven for their work. Lot of hours they put in on that, trying to make sure that the public is aware of the issues and sharing their views with the TPO on completing the connectivity of the bridge. So thank you very much for that as well. We also have been working with the state and the Emergency Operations Center for FEMA vaccination site in the south. As you all may know, there's a site up in Hard Rock and there's also another site at Miami-Dade North, which is very, very far from Color Bay. And we've been working with them. Ralph's done a great job of working with the South Lake Culture Arts Center and Eric Bliss and getting a place down here for vaccination. So this is not, no registration required. You walk up, you can register, get your vaccine, get observed and leave. They're going to be doing anywhere from five to 700 vaccinations a day, all the way through the 23rd on Tuesday. And then in three weeks, they are returning for the second dose for everyone to get their vaccines. So as for individuals who are 60 years of older, resident, staff of residents and staff of long-term care facilities, frontline healthcare personnel, law enforcement, firefighters over age 50, school employees and childcare workers 18 and older, and individuals with high-risk medical conditions deemed by physician to be vulnerable to COVID-19. So that's a great thing because it gives folks just a little bit of a, you don't have to go all the way downtown. I mean, Hard Rock to get that for our residents. Not to mention that this is accessible by bus and by our town circulator as well as our Go Connect shuttle service. So that's a good thing for them. So other than that, that concludes my mayor report and we will now go to the, see. Let's see. The Town Council Month Reports. Yep, and now we have a proclamation for the sad, sad retirement of probably the best clerk in the entire United States of America from the beginning of time up to this exact moment. She's very, very much appreciated. As I told her earlier today, she's been a true blessing to this town. So I will turn this over to, I guess, Sandra McCready. Sandra, are you there?
Good evening.
Good evening, Sandra. You are recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Debbie. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Town Council, Town Manager, Town Attorney, staff, and all of those in attendance. My name is Sandra McCready and I am the Florida Association of City Clerks South District Director and the Town Clerk for the Town Service Site. It is with great pleasure that I appear here this evening to congratulate Debbie Eastman, Master Municipal Clerk, on her upcoming retirement. Debbie Eastman retired in 2015 and returned to assist the Town of Color Bay in 2017 as intern Town Clerk. The Town Council entered into an agreement then to keep her as a Town Clerk. Great decision. Over the years that she has served in the state of Florida, Debbie has immersed herself in training, becoming an expert in sunshine law, public records law, procurement, lobbyist registration, financial disclosure, and the election processes. Debbie received her Certified Municipal Clerk designation in June 13, 1986, and her Master Municipal Clerk's designation in November 30th, 2004. She has served as a proud member of not only the Miami-Dade County Clerks Association for multiple years, but also the New Hampshire City and Town Clerks Association, where she served as the president, President of the New Hampshire Tax Collectors Association, Chair of the State Legislative Committee, President of the New England Association of City and Town Clerks, and served as the Region One Director for the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. Debbie also spent 10 days in Bosnia with the Organization of Corporations in Europe as an election supervisor during that country's first, very first election. Wow, what an amazing career, Debbie. We are so proud of you and your accomplishments and how hard you have always worked for the quality, recognition, and equal rights for all of us municipal clerks. Debbie, I know that you have served not only the Town of Color Bay, but every municipality in which you have worked with dedication and professionalism. I am sure your journey as a municipal clerk has been filled with challenges and rewards, but because of your dedicated services, nothing will stop you. I commend you for a total of 39 years of selfless hard work, perseverance, and service to the people. I know what you're looking, that you're looking forward to your well-deserved second retirement. I hope you have some wonderful and exciting adventures planned. At this time, I would like to take a moment and read Florida Association of City Clerks Resolution Number 2021-18. A resolution of Florida Association of City Clerks expressing appreciation and gratitude for many years of services and dedication of Town Clerk Deborah Eastman, MMC, for the Town of Color Bay, Florida. Whereas Deborah Eastman has worked for the Town of Color Bay and has diligently served as a Town Clerk and held herself to the highest standards, giving much more to the town that she received. And whereas Deborah Eastman was a valued member of the Florida Association of City Clerks and received MMC designation. And whereas Deborah Eastman has carried out the duties and responsibilities in her capacity to the best of her abilities, utilizing and sharing her knowledge and expertise, which was enhanced by her participation in FACC through its conferences and education seminars. Now therefore, yet resolved by the Florida Association of City Clerks that Section 1, the Florida Association of City Clerks offers its sincere appreciation and extends best wishes on behalf of all of its members to Deborah Eastman in recognition of her retirement after years of dedicated services and professionalism in representing the office of the Town Clerk of the Town of Color Bay. Section 2, this resolution shall take effect immediately, open adoption and authentication authentication by the signatures of the President and President-elect of the Florida Association of City Clerks, presented this 17th day of March 2021 by our President of the Florida Association of City Clerks, Deborah Buff, and President-elect Stacey Johnson. On behalf of the Florida Association of City Clerks, Debbie, the South District, thank you for your service and dedication and enjoy your retirement to the fullest. Godspeed, Debbie. We will definitely miss you. Thank you very much for everything you've done for us.
Debbie, I'd like to give you the floor if you'd like to address the council or the public.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm truly humbled. I appreciate Sandra taking the time to do this. She's been very sick and she wouldn't, she wouldn't give up on being here tonight. So I appreciate it so much. All of the opportunities that I have had here and other places in my career to learn and grow and to have wonderful relationships, I just really appreciate it so much. And thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. As you said, at best, you've by far given us more than we've given you. So thank you for your service and it's gonna be hard to fill those shoes. That's for sure. Okay, that takes us to the next item on our agenda is the Town Manager's Report. So Ralph, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, Members of Council. I'll be briefing my report tonight because we have some other guests for legislative update. Briefly, I'm sure you've all heard and read about the Federal Government Heroes Act. Our allocation based on population is going to be approximately $18 million. Again, since we, our population is less than 50,000 residents, the money will flow through the state of Florida, through the state, through the state of Florida. So one of the things that we will do is make sure that we come up with a plan because the funding, right now, it's based on on use of funds to respond to the COVID pandemic, deal with negative economic impacts of the COVID. Funds can be used for either grants or other aids to the community, for workers performing essential work during the COVID. And most importantly for us will be full revenue loss as a result of COVID and also necessary investment in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. So obviously, you know, we're not in the water and sewer business, but certainly we're looking at different options for the broadband infrastructure. Again, that's just what's in the bill. We know that we'll eventually have an agreement with the, with the state of Florida and I want to just keep the council posted. With that, since the pandemic is now what, almost the year anniversary, our total expenses have been related to the pandemic approximately $1.2 million. The majority of those funds, 893,000, are associated for our police department, which the majority of that will certainly be reimbursed through the CARES Act, FDLE grant that we received in an amount of $150,000 and also our FEMA funding appropriation. So we're very confident that we're going to, you know, try to recoup all those funds, particularly now with the the federal funding Heroes Act is there to kind of plug in some of the revenue loss. So with that, that completes my report. But next up, we're going to have a tag team event with Jonathan Kilman. I think I saw Jonathan Kilman and Mario Bailey there and also Frank Bernardino to let us know what's going on up in Tallahassee. So Jonathan.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be with you all. And coming to you from Tallahassee, although I will tell you, this is certainly not a typical legislative season for us. Working on your behalf, the Capitol is in a very different posture than it typically is. The Senate is nearly, nearly entirely shut down for access to visitors. And the House is, although it's accepting visitors, it's on a limited basis with escorts in and out. All testimony is occurring from the civic centers. So a lot of people who are coming up here to try to address the legislature have to do it remotely from the civic center. So in that regard, you know, I feel that, you know, it's beneficial for us to be up here representing you because we're here kind of all day long and we're able to access the legislators as they're coming and going and being able to communicate with them throughout the day. We're setting up Zooms, phone calls, kind of endlessly. And so in that sense, again, it's a very typical session, but we've been able to move things along. The Salka Bay Drainage Project, I'm happy to, to mention, has made it through its first subcommittee in the House and is now before the Full Appropriations Committee. And we are now working the Senate side of the process as well. And so I feel like we put ourselves in a good posture for progress. And as you know, given the year that we're in, the competitiveness for funds is significant. The availability of funds, although we are now seeing some federal aid coming to the state, at least in the early stages of legislature where we weren't aware of what the funds would look like. The legislature is taking a conservative approach and, and so we've worked very hard to make sure that you've got funding availability. And we put yourself, put, put the town in the best position to get access to funds. I'm going to turn it over to Mario briefly to mention the impact fee bill that we've been working on in your map.
Sure. And right before I go to the impact fee bill, there's a couple of other things. So we actually met in person with the Chair of Agapropes, also the Appropriation Chair, and also the Senate Agaprop Chair. And so we were able to have in-person visits. The House, they, they allow you in, but the Senate, as Jonathan said, does not. The Senate Agaprop Chair already had COVID and so he was a little more, more minimal to meeting. We've been working very closely with the League of Cities Fair. That's the I'm gonna, the acronym is the Florida Association of Intergovernmental Affairs. I'm gonna mess that acronym. It's fair. It's a group, it's a group that, all the different lobbyists, we work together on issues. So we've been meeting weekly regarding a lot of specific bills. We were able to get an amendment on vacation rental bills specifically to the impact. The impact fee bill, it has not moved in the Senate and so we're pressing real hard to work on that committee. It passed one committee in the, in the House. It was amended, but we're still not happy with the posture. The Town Attorney has reached out. He's also been reaching out to the League of Cities. And, and so we're really working to really kind of stop it in the Senate. So.
Great. And I'll mention briefly as well, we've been working with Senator Garcia to do everything that's possible to ensure the early access to vaccines, whatever is possibly available. Ralph had reached out to make sure that's something that we focused on as well, to provide the town whatever, whatever options were available that would be advocating that they be made available as soon as possible. And finally, I know at least one of the commissioners had expressed a mention in Senate Bill 86, which is the bill that relates to the Bright Futures Scholarship Program. The initial bill is filed in the Senate by Senator Maxley Wood. Create a list of programs that would limit, that would make certain study courses of study ineligible for Bright Futures scholarships. The Governor has recently publicly stated his support for full funding of the Bright Futures Program. The bill has been amended in the Senate to now direct the Board of Governors to provide a list of courses of study, of majors that would be more likely or less likely to lead to a job and it would make the amount of funding available to Bright, under Bright Futures kind of contingent upon that list and make the overall amount of funding available to each student variable from year to year based on the budget. As I, as I said, it's a Senate bill. There is not a direct companion of the House and the Governor has expressed publicly his support for maintaining full funding of Bright Futures as is. So I do have some hope to think that, that the Bright Futures Program will remain intact and we'll keep you updated as that, as that develops.
Thank you, Jonathan and Mario. And then Mayor, Members of Council, I'm going to have Frank Bernardino go ahead and make his presentation on different environmental aspects and legislation that he's been following as well. So Frank, if you can just unmute yourself there.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Good to see you. Ralph asked me to hit a couple of highlights on some major pieces of legislation that are making their way through the process right now that are going to impact the town directly. The most prominent of which is the Governor's Proposal for Resiliency Plan going forward. We've now seen the House of Representatives and the Senate have put their, their bills on the table. But the Governor proposed had been a $1 billion program, which would have seen the state bond to secure roughly $250 million a year for four years, approximately 170 million, 180 million of that would have gone in direct grant awards to local governments for resiliency-related projects. The Governor's focus on that program, though, was intended to cover the difference in cost between a current infrastructure project whose costs may increase as a result of sea level rise impact. And so let's assume that you were doing a road and you did an assessment of how that road would be impacted by sea level rise and that would result in a cost change in the project. The Governor's proposal was going to cover that delta, that change in the cost. The House and the Senate, however, have taken a different approach. Neither one of them is proposing to bond any dollars. Instead, they're proposing $100 million on a recurring basis, again, grants to local governments. Unlike the Governor's plan, which focused on a change in cost between a project pre-sea level rise impact versus post, the House and the Senate are just making $100 million available for a project in the coast, period. So you don't have to go through that dance of what percentage of the project was related to sea level rise versus not. The Department is being required to develop a three-year forecast and to produce an annual plan of ranked resiliency projects for the legislature to consider and fund. Those applications are going to flow through the water management districts. So the districts will open on an annual basis, a cycle, accepting new applications. And they, their goal is to build, if you will, a program that'll be very similar to the transportation five-year work plan, but instead have a three-year work plan for resiliency projects statewide. One of the things that is subject and can potentially change in the future is the amount of money because we all know that $100 million is not going to take us very far as a state because that's the entire pot for the entire state. So one of the things that they're requiring in the bill is for the Office of Economic Demographics and Research, which is, I like to refer to them as the EF Hutton of Tallahassee. When they talk, the legislature listens. They're the ones that give the budget projection that the state builds its project upon. They're going to require them to develop a, a near-term and long-term projection of the total cost of sea level rise and flooding adaptation for the entire state. And the hope is that once we have that number, and it will be staggering, that the state will then develop a plan for how to finance it. And so that's generally what the bill contains. I, I know that you guys follow the work of the Climate, Southeast Climate Change Compact. I facilitated a meeting between the Southeast Climate Change Compact and the Department of Environmental Protections to review the bill and consider other amendments that would make the programs more easily accessible to local governments and to get a better handle on the criteria. Because the bill is proposed right now, doesn't have specific criteria in it. And so the local governments want to know that both in the development of the regulations, that you'll have access so that you can determine, you know, who will have an advantage over what local government based on how those criteria evolve. So that's one of the things that we covered in that meeting. I also facilitated a meeting for the same compact members with the Speaker's Office because we wanted to make sure that they were aware of those changes. So there's a lot going on in the resiliency space. The last thing that I'll add in that regard is that the Governor announced this morning, I know Ralph, you shared that, that email with, with, with the council, an additional billion dollars for resiliency. Now that's above and beyond what's being contemplated in these bills. Now that's not a one-shot billion dollar, throw the money out the window at whatever project comes. They plan on doling it out in $250 million increments over four years. So at least in the short term, if the bill becomes a law, the one that's making its way through the process, will see $350 million in sea level rise and flooding adaptation projects for implementation statewide. And so that's obviously a very encouraging thing. Another bill that we're working on, that we're monitoring, that will directly impact you, I believe, Mr. Mayor, you were invited by Miami-Dade County to be a member of their new Biscayne Resiliency Committee. The state is establishing a parallel committee. It's, there's a little bit of a tug and pull right now between the county and, and the legislature on the need for the committee, given the steps that the county has taken. So they're going to hopefully, over the course of the next few weeks, reconcile the differences and perhaps have the state use the bill to authorize the state's participation in the committee that the county is already setting up. And I know that Miami-Dade County is working very hard on, on that issue. And then the last thing that I wanted to bring to y'all's attention is the, the compact members have drafted a memorial that is to be sent from the legislature to Congress asking that the federal government immediately authorize and fund a reevaluation of the Central and South Florida Flood Control Project. As many of you know, the SERP, the Everglades Restoration, is a component of how that system operates. But that system has a completely different mission and purpose and cost, the most important of which, as the name entails, is providing you with flood protection. And there's approximately 17 structures between Miami-Dade Broward and Palm Beach County that are six inches away in additional sea level rise from being completely compromised. And so one of the priorities that the compact has identified is the need for the Corps of Engineers to immediately commence a reevaluation of all of that infrastructure to ensure that you're provided with the flood protection that you're going to need going forward. And, and I've been tasked with securing the sponsors and shepherding that issue through the process. So those are three really significant things in the environmental realm that we're working on that are directly going to impact you and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Frank. So Mayor, Members of Council, this time, you know, we have our lobbying team there. If there's any, any questions, as you can see, they're, they're, they're busy. I mean, it's not like the old days, kind of walking the halls, I guess, you know, between Zoom meetings and, and what have you. I think they, they've been doing a great job so far. If there's any questions from Mayor Councils, they're, they're here. They're available.
All right, Roger has a question you recognize, sir? On you?
All right, thank you very much. And it's good to see you guys. There, the echo is done. Jonathan and all of you, it's, it's, it's hard doing this virtually. Like I so enjoy when we actually get together and talk through these things the way that we do. So thank you, Jonathan, especially for mentioning that the Senate Bill 86, and I mentioned this to Ralph a couple of days ago. So I'm glad you researched it a bit for me. This was actually brought up to me by a couple of my students who depend on Bright Futures. It's especially beneficial to IB students, to Cambridge students that we have here in Color Bay. And the idea that they have to pick the right major in order to get this scholarship that is such a big deal to them is, is they're having a very hard time with it. So they've asked me how, you know, what they can do about it. And so I'm actually meeting with them tomorrow afternoon to help them with some kind of strategy or something. I noticed, I was just looking at the vote history on it. I know they meet, they met this morning, the Education Committee, and it passed 5-4 as a party line vote. And then the two amendments failed 5-4, 4-5 on party line, which is unfortunate that it's such a partisan issue apparently, whether our kids should merit this kind of financial aid. But thank you for looking into it. I hope that we can you know, in our own way, do something to, to at least get this bill amended to get that one part because it's a huge bill. It sounds like an omnibus of financial aid. And it's just this one part that is really disagreeable to consider. So, but thank you for looking into it.
Happy to.
All right. BJ, you recognize her?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We good? Okay. Fantastic. I just want to thank the lobbying team, you know, Jonathan, Mario, Frank, for, for all the work that you do on our behalf and the town's behalf and, and, you know, putting in work as much as you can on the ground there. My question is, in reference to HB 157 that the Town Council had voted on, a resolution supporting the passage of that, which was the requiring additional physical measures, EKGs, for student athletes and whatnot. Is there any update on, on the progress of that as well as the Senate Companion Bill?
The, the bill still has three stops to go in the House. The first committee is the Education and Career Development Committee. I will check with the Chair.
I will check with the Chair on that to see if it if it's got the chance to move. The House is having additional meetings of the subcommittee, so the fact that it hasn't been heard yet does not mean it can't be heard. But the longer we go into legislative session with three committee stops, it's it's difficult. I don't know how many stops it has in the Senate.
It has three, and it's past its first committee reference in the Senate unanimously. And so we will have to get it moving. If we get at least to one hearing in the House, if it if the committee stopped, we do have the ability to have it amended. And so right now, it's a lot in the Senate, and we just need to get it moving in the first committee reference in the House.
I I can share on that bill that that's a priority for the Fire Chiefs Association. And and so I know that a number of us that represent counties throughout the state have been visiting with our legislators and telling them that this is a priority for that organization as well, trying to get the bill moving. So it, as they say, it takes the village, we're all, we're all pushing it.
And one and one positive thing about the bill, also, the House, like, is a bipartisan prime co-sponsorship, which you kind of rarely see. And so, and that's one positive thing. And so we will be working on your behalf to get it moved in-house.
And again, as I said, the the House process is a little bit different this year. So the fact that the bill hasn't been heard yet isn't isn't quite as dire as it maybe have been in prior years. But that said, I think, you know, it's important to kind of keep the pressure on. So we'll make sure to reach out to the Chair as well and and, you know, add an additional voice at this point in time.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? And again, like to remind the council, when we were up in Tallahassee, we saw some other cities that did not have any lobbyists working for them, tried at the last minute to get things through. And work isn't done when we're up there, the work is done all year long. So I think there's a definite benefit to it. And just want to put that reminder out there. All right, so Ralph, anything further?
No, Mayor, just want to follow up. I think Vice Mayor Callahan had a question that you want to try to address on the manager report. So just, I had that on my little notes here.
Okay, Councilman Vice Mayor Callahan, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, through the Chair to the Town Manager. One of the things that that I've been been looking at, you know, for for some time, is our building official. I know that we use CAP Government, CAP Government. We have a an agreement with them, and our entire building department is outsourced through through CAP Government. What one of, one of the concerns that I've had recently, as I, as I've dealt with some issues within within Cutler Bay, but but not only that, in dealing, you know, in in my, in my private life with with other building departments and other municipalities, is the accountability of of the building official, right? So the the building official is not part of our staff, right? So we we technically don't have any any control necessarily over that, over that building official. And in most municipalities, that is a staff position, where we have, you know, direct report. And it's something that either the, either the Town Manager and/or at meetings and so forth, that that council can can reach out and and get specific information from that department head, as is we do with some of our other departments head here, you know, parks and financial and, you know, Public Works, right? So all of those are are at our ability to be able to get information quite quickly. I've noticed in my time on the council and stuff that we don't have that opportunity with the building official. So my question would be, could, you know, obviously with with the council's consent, you know, I would like to see some kind of financial report as to what the cost would be and/or the cost savings is. If if we brought that particular position in-house, you know, more as a part-time position, doesn't necessarily have to be a full-time position, right? So there, so therefore, we have that position and the accountability of that position on staff. So I'm not saying that we want to bring the entire building department in-house, because I don't think that that's financially feasible. But in kind of a hybrid combination or a hybrid contract that we could have with CAP, where we we have that building official as part of our staff, and that accountability is there, and we have that direct report, but yet keeping the majority of the of the building department in, you know, within within CAP. So I, you know, I would ask, you know, the the council's indulgence, if that, you know, in directing the Town Manager to bring that information back at a later meeting, that it would allow us to make a more, you know, intelligent decision, a financial decision in terms of that building official and and the accountability of that.
Ralph, thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for those comments. Actually, in my previous lifetime with the Town of Miami Lakes, we actually went through that journey. And and I think I think it's just a matter of 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 time for us. I mean, as we know, we we are now, you know, 15 years old, you know, getting ready to go on 16 next year. And I think that there there is some viability to that. I certainly, I think that that's a a good option, that we will provide you the financial data. We we've done some some models before, just kind of like looking at every department, see where we could try to save some money and what have you. But I think this one here, it's going to be more, as you mentioned, you know, the 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 accountability, having having our own, like you said, part-time building official over monitoring the, all the trades, correct? Because right now, nothing to reflection of our current building official, but that building official is a CAP employee, right? Does a great job, but there's going to be certain instances that that our staff starts dealing with certain, you know, technical issues with residents that we are now kind of, you know, involved in there. That would be normally the active role of your your town building official. So certainly, you know, thank you for that, Vice Mayor. That's something we've been kind of kicking around for for several years. And I think I think it's a matter of us just putting together that information for you and gladly provide that to the council. And there's actually been other models, as I mentioned, my time as Assistant Manager in the Town of Miami Lakes. We actually went through that, through that progression, as you as you're mentioning now. So we have some good experience underneath our belts. So I'll be more than happy to, and we'll provide, we'll work closely with our Community Development Director, as well as our Building Co-Compliance Manager. Because again, a lot of that time is going to free up that building co-compliance manager's time to do more actual code enforcement, you know, out that we've heard before. So so I think it'll be a win-win for both. We'll provide you that information. Hopefully, within, you know, maybe the next meeting or the next 30, 60 days, we'll provide the officials. But thank you for bringing that up, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Ralph.
Ralph, anything else, sir?
No, Mayor, that concludes my report. Sorry, it was a little bit lengthy, but I think it was important to deal with everything that's going on in Tallahassee. And that concludes my report, man.
Do you happen to have any information on the discussion we had concerning the the wall of beautification?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. During, and you're right, I had that on my cheat sheet, but during the last council meeting, the Mayor, Mayor Bot requested the town staff to kind of evaluate the wall, the perimeter wall that's on 184, those those perimeter wall, the brick, the red brick wall are that, those, that wall is owned by each property owner. And we found out the hard way, if you recall, one time, unfortunately, it was a car that went through one of the walls, and we had to go through that entire research and come to find out that all those perimeter walls, since it's not a master association, is owned individually by each property owner. So what our friends in the north did, Palmetto Bay, what they did, they went through a program where they went and got consent from each owner, signed a legal document, and the the village actually performed the the painting and the repairs of of that perimeter wall. So what we have done in the past, knowing that, we started getting all those calls, right? If you recall, originally, we had our residents on our side kind of pressure clean, right? So they pressure cleaned it, and it was great, we didn't have to issue citations to anybody, they voluntarily did that. But then, then obviously, our friends in Palmetto Bay did one up on us, right? As I say, they actually, they actually went there, and I think it looks great. You know, I think it looks great, right? And that's one of our main corridors. So what I did, and right after that, we immediately had our Public Works Department obtain three proposals from different contractors. Because if you look at it closely, you know, Vice Mayor, appreciate this, there's a lot of stucco work that needs to be done there, right? There's a lot of, you know, a lot of different cracks and what have you. It's not just, I thought I would just kind of go out there with a paintbrush until I walked in with our Public Works Director. So so Mayor, we did receive proposals, I think the 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 they range anywhere from, you know, $24,000 to $18,000. So again, that's something, if it's the will of the council, we certainly will, I would recommend that we come back with a a town resolution at our next meeting. You know, I'll look for the funding source, you know, some type of beautification project through our Finance Director. And then also, I'll work with our Town Attorney to try to get that legal documentation. Because again, we are now repairing and painting, beautifying a private wall, you know, along that, along that area. But again, everybody doesn't see it on that side, you see it every day when you travel. So I'll be more than happy to, we have a good template from our, from, we've been in constant communication with with the Village of Palmetto Bay, their Public Works Department, their Managers' Office about the forms and what have you. And I'll be more than happy to present that item.
All right, thank you, Ralph, that'd be be great. It's rare that Palmetto Bay beats us to something, so. It must be good. So Councilman Vice Mayor Callahan, you were recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ralph, just a, just a quick question. I, you know, obviously, I think that's a a much-needed project, and it's in one of the major corridors. But are we opening up Pandora's Box to everybody else that has a private wall that now may want that beautified? I mean, I don't want to get into the business of beautifying everybody's private walls in the in the town.
Right. So so we had a couple of instances that you see little subtle things that we did years ago along the Old Cutler Road project, improvement project. There was some homes there, private communities that had little perimeter walls along, right across from Hill South. What we did in that situation, Mayor Councilmembers, we actually masked the walls by planting hedges and bushes along there. That was on Old Cutler Road between the two traffic circles. Another project that we did very subtly, and then you'll you'll know, on 87th Avenue, south of the traffic circle on Old Cutler Road, there's another community in there, just before you get to 208 Street, that that had a kind of like deteriorating wall, it was inactive HOA. And we've been going after them for years, trying to, you know, find out legally what we could do to get them to repair that wall. And what we did there, we did another beautification project where we planted hedges and kind of masked that wall as you as you drive down there, you walk along the 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 shared dirt path. In this situation, there's not enough room between the sidewalk and the wall to do that type of, you know, landscaping, beautification, masking project. So we'll work closer with the Town Attorney. I know that there's another situation along Frangial Road that there's a, again, that brick wall along Frangial Road. There, believe it or not, we actually walked aside with our design team. And there's actually, like, between the sidewalk and the wall, literally, like, maybe like a four or five-inch gap there that just kind of weeds through throughout the years, and we try to kind of maintain it. There, we actually have it as part of our Frangial Roadway project to put in some, like, growing ivy or something to mask that wall. So there might be some opportunities there. But I think it's just a way that we worded in the resolution and the agreement. And I'll work closely with the Town Attorney, because, you know, I'm thinking of the rest of the perimeter walls that are out there. And and we'll try to work that out.
But so so again, the question is, right? We have town ordinances or something that make the HOAs maintain those walls, right? So, you know, my concern, and and I'm, again, don't don't mistake my my comments, you know, because I am 100% for the beautification on 184, because that's certainly a main thoroughfare, and we have our neighbors to the north that have, you know, that have done the same. But I, my hesitation is, I just don't want to get into a situation where we're trying to hold HOAs accountable to maintain their common walls and stuff throughout the town. And now, we've set a precedence, because we're painting and we're and we're landscaping, and then they're going to go, hey, we're not going to do anything, you do it. And the next thing you know, now, you know, we're we're funding the beautification and 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 the painting of of all of these, all of these walls, you see what I'm saying? That's just, that's that slippery slope that I just want to try to avoid.
Vice Mayor, I think, you know, you either have to be for it or against it. So we'll have the resolution, you can go ahead and cast a vote at that time, and we can address each of these issues. We don't have, I don't think there's there's that many of them. You know, I've talked to Ralph about the two that are there, but, you know, we can address these one at a time. I don't think, if you're saying not do anything.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Then well, let's let's take the resolution, and you can take it up to that point, and this means at the next meeting. So no, we don't, okay, ad nauseam about speculation right now, it's not going to get us anywhere. Okay? All right. Thank you, Ralph. Anything further?
Uh, no, no, Mr. Mayor, Councilor, no.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any polls from the consent agenda? There are none. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
By Roger and a second by BJ. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, the consent agenda passes. Yes.
I think we overlooked the Town Attorney's report and the Town Clerk's report.
Yes, we did. Mitch, do you have any report for us today?
I I don't have anything to report today.
Thank you very much. Madam Clark, do you have a report today?
And I will pass, thank you.
All right, we're going to open this up again. Again, we have no quasi-judicial. Public comments is now open, you've already read the instructions. Facilitator, are there anybody in the queue for public comments?
At this time, there's no one in the queue to speak, sir.
Okay, now we're closing public comments, and that takes us to resolutions. So we have Resolution 11A. Madam Clark, if you can please read Resolution 11A.
A resolution of the Mayor and Town Council of the Town of Cutler Bay, Florida, urging the Miami-Dade County Public School Board to implement a public education campaign that teaches students the dangers associated with vaping and to study and study the feasibility of vaping device buyback program, providing for transmittal and providing for an effective date.
I think very much, this is Councilman BJ Duncan's items.
There we go. No, there we do not. Okay, all good. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We do have a member of our Town's Youth Council Committee who's going to address the Town Council very briefly coming up, but just to give the Town Council a reminder, a refresher. Prior to the pandemic, in February and March of last year, the Youth Council Committee presented an item similar to this to us, and then went back and worked on it. And then we, you know, working with town staff, we crafted a resolution to 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 go on that advisory opinion. So with that being said, Youth Council Committee Member Teresa Schuster is here, and she will be presenting to you all right now.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Mead. Hi, can you hear me? Good evening, Mayor Mead, Vice Mayor Callahan, Councilmembers. I'm Teresa Schuster on behalf of the Cutler Bay Youth Council Committee. And today, we've brought before you a resolution addressing the problem of youth vaping, both in general and within our town specifically, along with a memorandum that further explains both the dangers of youth vaping and then the actions we think that the town can take to combat it through this resolution. So as Councilmember Duncan said a moment ago, we began working on this resolution about a year ago. And when discussing it, we realized it was clearly one of the most pressing issues for the youth in Cutler Bay that's prevalent both within our town schools and then just beyond in the town in general. We believe this prevalence of vaping among youth is quite troubling. So despite it being currently illegal for youth under 21, quite a substantial percentage of high school students and even a significant number of middle school students actually have used vaping devices at some point in our memorandum. I think we cite a 2019 survey, and it showed that, for example, over 40% of Florida high school students have used it. And that's a number which unfortunately is only continuing to increase over the years. And this presents a problem for a multitude of reasons. First of all, there are significant health risks that vaping poses for youth. These have been extensively researched. It can damage youth's physical as well as their mental health. There have been numerous cases of youths being hospitalized as a result of vaping, some unfortunately even passing away. And not only do the e-liquids used in vaping contain nicotine, they can also contain much more dangerous drugs, such as synthetic marijuana. Perhaps most troubling is the fact that many youth are not even really aware of what exactly is in their vaping devices. Unlike cigarettes or other forms of devices, it's much easier to hide ingredients in them. And there's currently less regulation on this than than on other things. In addition, vaping can also have negative social effects, both on other youth and then on the community out large, some of which we detail in the memorandum. So for example, because vaping is illegal, youth all too often resort to obtaining these vaping devices through improper channels. This can expose them to gain violence, other negative situations. So for all these reasons, the Youth Council Committee believes the town should trust the problem of youth vaping directly by passing this resolution. And so in this resolution, we propose several things. So first, we propose that the town work to create a public information campaign for schools in order to ensure that more youth are aware of these harmful effects of vaping. Although there's been significant research, not everyone is actually aware of it. And that's one of the main causes of this problem. And second, we propose that And second, we propose that the town explore the feasibility of a buyback program of vaping devices to incentivize youth to relinquish their vaping devices and, you know, use healthier. And so we suggest that the town also partner with the Miami-Dade County Public School District in order to facilitate all of this. If approved, copies of this resolution will be sent to the school board, other commissions and boards in the county. And on behalf of the youth council committee, I know the town recognizes our concern for this issue that so dramatically affects youth. And we recommend you vote to approve our resolution addressing it. Thank you all so very much. And if you have any questions on this resolution, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Teresa. Um, so with that being said, um. I mean, this is a continuation of, of work that we had been doing, uh, prior to the pandemic, um, and at the, the, the youth council brought forward this advisory. Opinion to the council and council, uh, essentially instructed the youth council to go ahead and, and work with town staff to, to come up with language for this. And that's what we've done now. So. I'm very proud. I'd like to just say that I'm very extremely proud of every member of the youth council committee and the work that you all have done recently. Um, and with that, um, if there are any questions, uh, by all means.
Thank you very much, BJ. Uh, Councilman Callahan, you're recon- or Vice Mayor Callahan, you're recognized. You're unmuted. Vice, Vice Mayor, you're muted. Your speaker is reached.
Sorry, I was saying a lot of interesting things. Um, so. So my question is through, uh, through council member Duncan and I guess to, uh, to Teresa, if, you know, to, to clarify, we're, we're talking. And when you talk about in the resolution where you're encouraging the, uh, the town to adopt a buyback program, is that buyback program? Just for the schools that are within the town's jurisdiction or are we looking at, you know, town residents?
I believe the, I'm sorry about that. I. Okay, perfect. So, um, as, as this resolution lays out, uh, it would particularly be for, uh, the school, you know, uh, students within the schools. It would not be for. Adults and consenting adults and whatnot throughout the town. It would be, uh, primarily a school-driven, uh, incentivization program. Um, and ultimately the resolution calls for the town to conduct a feasibility study or survey within. The town and with the, the school board to determine, um, what type of a program can be to incentivize these, uh, these students at the town schools to, uh. Turn in their vapes for, for some sort of, you know, reward or some sort of recognition or what have you.
Right. So, um, with, with, with that being said, is the, and I guess my, my question was, does the program reach beyond? Uh, students that, that, that necessarily, uh, attend schools within our jurisdiction? Because we have a lot of students that are within our town boundaries that do attend a lot of other schools. So, you know, to be able to extend that program, to be able to, you know, buy back those other devices from kids that may be attending other schools. You know, that, that's just something that I think that, that, you know, if it's not, uh, part of this consideration, then maybe that's might be something that we would want to do as well. Um, you know, so we, we encompass the, you know, the entire student population of, of Cutler Bay.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that would be a wonderful and amazing, um, idea. I believe the way that the resolution is worded, it, it leaves it open for that interpretation as well, so that the town. Manager and town staff can, can go in that direction to determine, uh, the best possible way to move forward. And then that will also allow, you know, all, uh, minors, you know, all youth, all 18 and under, uh. Residents of the town, whether they go to school within the town boundaries or not, um, to have access to, uh, a potential program that could be developed in the future. Because ultimately, you know, they are still our residents and we still want to look at for their best interest.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And, uh, my congratulations to you and to the town, uh, the youth council for bringing this forward. Thank you.
All right. With that being said, looking for a motion, uh, for approval.
I will make a motion to approve resolution 11A.
Second, we have a motion by BJ, a second by Roger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right. Madam Clark, uh, item 11B, please.
A resolution of the mayor and town council of the town of Cutler Bay, Florida, appointing members to the environmental task force and providing for an effective date.
Right. This is, uh, I wonder if we need to open this one up for discussion. Um. Uh, Roger, did you, when this goes aside, the floor is open. Yep. All right. You're good? Oh, yeah. Sounds good. Excellent. All right. Thank you. So, yeah, this is the, um, the environmental task force that, uh, we've been working on for a couple of months now. We have. Eight applicants, uh, representing members of the public, residents of Cutter Bay. Part of the parameters of this task force is that it include five members, one coming from the educational community, one coming from the business community. And three other residents with experience in environmental science, engineering, some aspects of the kind of things that this task force should be working on. So I'm sure you've all had time to look over the resumes of these individuals. I think we have some great candidates, applicants. Um, I, I have my proposed slate of five from the eight that I could bring forward if. You'd like to consider it or we can do it some other way. I leave it to your discretion. No, I, I think we, we look at, if you'd like to go ahead and put your five names forward, uh, Roger, that'd be fine.
Okay, I will do that.
Okay, so in no particular order, it would be, uh, representing the educational community, Adrian Deladonier. Who teaches at Wiggum Elementary and is a resident. We all know her from the, uh, Baynans events, the cleanup that she's been doing for years. Uh, we have, uh, representing business, Ralph Geronimo, uh, who's been involved in the town since the, uh, since the very beginning and has worked. With staff and with various departments and various, uh, capacities. And then for the other three, um, Eduardo Deragon. Uh, who you've probably all met at some point, uh, very active in our community, uh, Eduardo Verona, who we, we just gave a commendation to last month. You may have heard of him.
Who?
Yes. And finally, uh, Maria, I, I want to say Bodegi, I, if I mispronounced it, I'm sure I will be corrected soon enough. Who is actually a retired, uh, park ranger. She worked at Biscayne National Park. And, uh, retired to care for family under the COVID circumstances, but comes with a great deal of experience specifically with. The Biscayne Bay and, uh, the ecosystem. So th- those are the, my five, uh, suggestions and the other three are all. Very interested in qualified people in their own ways, but that's the, that's the slate that I recommend for, for this task force. Does, uh, anybody else have any recommendations or? Uh, other party that they could bring forward? No? I think that was a very good list, Roger. It's, uh, very, very close. So I'm okay with those designations. Uh, is anybody else in agreement? We have consensus on that. So with that, we're looking for a motion for approval by 11B, uh, with the members as, as designated by Roger.
So moved.
We have that movement by Rogers, looking for a second. Second by Council, Vice Mayor Callahan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Madam Clark can read item 11C, please.
A resolution of the mayor and town council of the town of Cutler Bay, Florida, selecting properties, environmental assessment and remediation. And to conduct soil remediation services for property located at 18551 Old Cutler Road. Waiving competitive bidding due to impractic- impracticability, providing for authorization and providing for an effective date.
All right. Thank you very much. So it was open up for discussion. Anybody have any questions or concerns on this item? As we have none, I'm looking for a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
All right, we have a move by Roger. Need a second? We have a second by Councilman Lord. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Madam Clark can read item D, please.
A resolution of the mayor and town council of the town of Cutler Bay, Florida, appointing Mauricio Melinu. As interim town clerk, authorizing the mayor to execute an offer letter relating to the same and providing for an effective date.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, I think many of you are very aware of Mauricio. Uh, he stepped in, uh, quite often, uh, during the years. I think he's very, very capable. Uh, you know, the town wall has been with us for a very long time. Um, but I'd like to open this item up for discussions. Any discussion on this item?
Great candidate.
I'm looking for a motion for approval. We have a motion from BJ, looking for a second. Second from Roger, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right, folks, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Is there any items, uh, the council would like to discuss? No? All right. With none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.